I don't even know her. But when they come out and say, oh, we got such a nice group, we all work together and everything is done. And when I have problems of my own and I find out nothing goes good. It didn't even grow it up because two years later and they still haven't got me back in answer. And so then they say, oh, we got such a nice group, we all work so good together. Well, then it's too close to admit the group because if everybody agrees then there's a problem there.
My question I'd like to have put on the record after talking to Dottie yesterday. She put some verbiage out there to me that Fred was thinking about getting off the water board. You let, you told me that.
No, I said he.
There was discussion.
No, I said he was considering not running for the chairman position.
But he's thinking about staying on the water board also?
Yes. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure about that.
Well, tonight we're just making a motion and either proven it or not. And then we'll go forward as far as, you know, if we can, if it does take a ballot measure, I think I checked into that. I'd have to review my notes. I will find out for sure and we can, and get back to all of you.
Well, here's, here's the question. How much time are we talking? I mean, if we're talking two weeks, we can just table this now and do some heavy advertising for the next two weeks. Two weeks will suffice. And if nobody turns in an application, then we're back to the same board it is.
I would agree. Two weeks or 30 days, put some energy effort out there and see if there's anybody interested. I go along with Charlie if that's the case and 30 days it don't work out and then it comes back on the ballot. And we can, if she's the only one in 30 days and there's no interest, then I guess we would go forward. Now, do we, nobody?
Well, and the issue being there and again, we did start advertising it and a lot of people knew about it. I mean, it was pretty vocal in the community, but I didn't get any additional applications. That was clear back in November.
But we weren't advertising it just from the water board, you had them all on there.
Well, and if you're not active in the city or typically, you typically know about the things. If you're not active at the city, there's not too much, you know, you can do to reach those particular people. But I noticed, you know, the papers, the paper, the then still news is leaving us as well. So, so we don't have, have, you know, a lot of options here other than doing mailings or something of that sort. And most of those get thrown in trash. So, I'm looking for somebody that, that's, you know, actually want to approve the city. I do think that Dottie does have that at heart. You know, but you're also correct that she did have the, you know, the period there. And we didn't see too terribly much change in what was happening. I would like to see her, you know, get a little more stern and, you know, maybe, 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 you know, we're picking on the wrong side, so.
Well, another thing too you have to consider, they have business to, they have business to deal with in the next 30 days. So, they're not going to have a quorum. I guess they would have two people, I don't, you know, saying they both came.
They had that before when Christie wasn't coming to the meetings for a while, the two of them making all the decisions.
Yeah, I guess, well, it's up to you guys. Ms. Parker?
Oh, I really appreciate what Councilwoman Osborn said and that if they move the meetings to an afterward time period, you might have more applicants for the position.
That it would be difficult to apply for it when you don't even know what they do. Maybe it could be something that could be put on the bottom of your water bill. Or they put little notes, they used to, they may put little notes sometime actively looking for board member. But then that's one another three months. I don't know if everybody's on the same bill, but I just got mine, so.
Right, exactly, yeah. Well, I'll take a motion for either way.
Question, Nick.
I'd make a motion to approve for 30 days and we'll advertise in the position to see if we get any more applications. If we do get any more applications, of course, we can make the decision out of those applicants. You know, I would also like to, well, let me make that motion.
I'll second. Is that a motion, Charles?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
He had a question.
Oh, Mr. Andrews?
Same as always. I went to a lot of meetings before all of your council stuff come up. And one of the things I brought up was having a night meetings to them. Nothing's been said at any theater. I gotta admit, Dottie actually called me. She come out and watched them flush the mains, even though they're not doing it right according to the DNR, about closing valves and making water go through a main to clean it out. She at least made the attempt and contacted me and came out. But as far as anything changing about that, nothing's ever been done. We've still got the rusty water up in the heights. Fire department come out and had a fire up there. You're going to have an inch of rust in the bottom of a gallon jug for the next two days. And the problem is the DNR says you need to close valves and redirect water down, down the lines. And it's not being done. And then when you have a freeze up in the winter, how many times have we not been able to shut the water off? It happened this summer, just putting a valve in, putting it down on Gilbert. We had, what, one valve that wouldn't close. They ended up replacing three because none of them worked. And they're supposed to be exercising the valves and valves are not getting exercised this time. I mean, Danny, you've been up here, look how long some of these waters run in the winter time when we have a freeze up because they can't shut a valve off. And nothing's, it's been brought up over and over and over to them again and nothing's getting done.
Thank you, Mark. Next item is number nine, approval of the resolution calendar. All items listed on the resolution calendar will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
I'd like to bring something up to that, it was about on the resolution 6570, is that the property on Wright Street?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we got about, I was told by the mayor that we have about $6,200 in that property.
Do you want to act on that separately, Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so.
I'm making motion to approve nine A and C and D with B conversation.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
I'll second.
Smug?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Beam?
Yes.
Sebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 6570, setting date of public hearing for the disposal of city property.
I would like to see on that resolution, I know what you told me once about price for land. But we always want to get rid of things or dump things or give it away, in my opinion. I think we ought to put a fair price on that. The, we get on the webpage, it shows that property at about 14, $17,000 land value. So, I, I'm going to make a proposal to put it started out at a $10,000 bid and go from there and see what happens. We can always come down, but instead taking $993. At the very bottom, I'd like to see us accept and get what we've got in the property if we're going to sell the land. That's my ultimate goal of the thing. I don't know if this is a council thing because that's what I think.
You can't buy a lot in this town, a buildable lot for less than, it's probably right now right around $20,000. I'm the contractor and we run into this all the time, people building. And I've got lots, everybody else, some other people, a lot of people got lots and down, but nothing for $900. I mean, that's, that's worse than giving it away.
Is that something you, we'll just amend that resolution to read the minimum bid would be $10,000 on this property?
If the council agrees with what I'm asking.
Well, I'll take a motion.
I wouldn't go even that low.
I was just going to say, did we want an absolute minimum? Is it at or at the 6,600 that we have in it with disposal and fees and everything?
It's up to you guys.
I'd like to just make a motion and put it out there for a $10,000 minimum bid for that property size. Anybody that looks at the webpage from the county can see they're getting it half price. If something comes in, we can always decide, if somebody says, hey, I'll give it 7,500, we can decide then do we want to accept 7,500. We can say minimum bid of 10 and if it drags out, nothing goes on, then we can always come down. Instead of starting at 993 and go up, start at 10 and come down, we might make a couple dollars on that resolution.
Mayor, just to make sure, as it sits right now, especially during the cold months, the city's really not having to maintain it or put money for it.
That's great.
So, we're okay really not having a drain on the city right now. Come springtime, we're going to start having some yard care, mowing type of thing. So, right now would be a great time to look at this.
Yeah, that's minor compared to what, what you're asking for the lot right now compared to what it's worth. I mean, sure, you might have some maintenance on it, on the grass and this and that, but that's minor compared to.
Yeah, no, and I'm saying now is the good time to do it because the city isn't even having to spend a dime to maintain it. So, if we're going to try to get more out of it and see what it's really worth, now is the best time.
Because if you can find a lot in this city, a buildable lot in this city for 10,000 or less or 15,000 less, let me know. Because there isn't any around.
I built two, neither one of my lots were that. I wish they were. Yeah, no, I, I would be in support of seeing if we could get, for me, at the bare minimum what we've got in it. And if we choose to go higher, I would support that.
What do you mean by what we got in it?
There was additional costs for the disposal fees and things to get rid of the property that was there. So, I believe the cost to the city right now is what, 6,600?
That's correct.
So, the 6,600 is indebted really to that property right now.
I go along with Steve, 10,000 be a minimum, go from there.
Yep, if we want to go more.
Even that's lower than what I would figure. But I'd go along with Steve's.
I would, I would support Steve's statement on that.
That is the motion for me.
I'm seconding it.
Smug?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Beam?
Yes.
Sebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on this team is Budget Works House. I had sent it out, emailed it to everybody, asked if, anytime you guys want hard copies, let me know, especially for budget notes. I just wanted to kind of review the budget notes and then we'll leave it open for any questions that you might have. As far as wages, we have, for the police officers, Teamsters contract, the wages were going to increase by 2.75%. The chief wage increase was 2.5%. City employees' wage increase 2.5. When I say city employees, that just means people that are salary in the city for, in the city. Well, they may be hourly as well, but they're under the city and they're not part of the Teamsters or the I V E W union contracts. City employees, which would be Public Works and there is a few others, their wage increase was 2.75%. Police server and this is just a guesstimate because I reached out. The administrator for the police department has been working on quotes for that. I reached out to her IT company as well. We're still waiting on a firm quote on that, so I'm, I'm hoping that that goes down quite a bit. Our dispatch contract, I just got the final figure on that before this, after this was made up. And it was going to be, I think it was 3%. So, I did put the final update on as part of the police. And then we've been doing a series of heat pumps for the community response center. Those are figured each year. And I've also reached out to those people that are doing those for us to see where we are at on that. And I'll assume we'll be finished replacing those heat pumps. Fire garage door, and I just found out from Ryan tonight, we're going to come around and get additional quotes. We just replaced one in this fiscal year. We need to replace another one the next fiscal year. That one was around 6,600 and he got a quote back today that was over 12,000, almost 12,000. So, we'll be doing some further investigation into that situation. The chief is, we're going to replace his, replacing his laptop for 1,500. Sending two of the volunteer firefighters to EMT training program, which is $2,000 each. And then, of course, budgeted for fires, also the other share of that heat pump. There was additional funds in the equipment repair and that was for operational. The ambulance cots that we were, that I think it was a year and a half or two years ago that we purchased to stay some routine maintenance. This above and beyond the normal maintenance that we have on a daily basis. Parks, we're going forward with Deerwood Campground site expansion for 320,215. Engineering fees for that project were 29,000. We talked about the dog park, had been, parks have been asked about the dog park and council. I would like to apply for this grant, which is, will be on the next agenda to actually apply for this grant, that we would like to apply for 30,000 for the grant and have Black Hawk Gaming would do 50% of that. And that would be just to cover any incidentals that we might have, or stuff the city would have to buy just to make sure that maintenance items would be handled at the dog park. If you feel like you have a question, you can stop me at any time.
I had a question, Mayor. I thought when the mayor of Elfron came here, the bottom line was going to be if they got a grant, they, not you, got a grant, they would come back to us and we would decide on a $10,000 offset. And I talked to Tom today and he told me that they've decided to also give them a $10,000 for that down there, if I'm reading right what I was told. So, why is it more money than we originally talked to your table six, eight months ago when she came in and put a presentation on? Why is the amount going up when we sat here and said that we didn't even totally decide on the 10,000 to give them?
Well, the, they cannot apply for the grant for the city and stuff. She stated that that night and that is still the truth. We actually have to apply for the grant. So, we can apply for a 20,000 our grant and then just get 10,000 on the project. It was more, I had actually talked to Tom. We talked about maybe there might be some incidentals or what have you. But we'll go through the grant process. If you just want to go through and ask for 20,000 and then our share would be 10, that would be fine as well. That's going to be on the next meeting, so you have some time to think about it or maybe ask Tom.
Basically, this will help, help cover what we've already committed, 20,000. We're hoping that it'll cover a good portion of that. But at the same token time, water, I think we talked to Chris before about putting water down there. We've got to look at that. You've got to have a spot to put, give dogs water. Extra trees, if you've never been through there, I'm sure you've seen a lot of trees have been taken down because they were either dead or in the process of dying. Took groups through there, so we're looking at hopefully putting new trees in there to replace the ones we took down. And so, just little incidentals that will probably come in, especially after that fence is put up and the trail is gone.
One thing I'd like to have you, Tom, I, I'm supporting your project. But a lot of citizens have asked me about money continually at the parks. And I supported you with airing this gun to the council, you know that. What I'd like to see you do is put a 10-year plan together. And we talked about this a little bit. And, and come up with, what I'd like to know is, in a graph chart, how much are you going to be making based on your raise this year and how much do you anticipate? I know some of it's guests, but how much is your revenue, do you think, going to increase? And then are we going to look religiously at holding back on budgets and stuff and make sure that money comes in as an increase at the end of the operation? So, we can kind of like budget some money, like it could go forward to the next year or the next year or the next year, so that we can see really what was capitalizing there and how we're having savings going forward. Because I think you could probably put on a five or 10-year plan and show us, you know, what you're doing. We know what you've done, just kind of graph it, I'll be very good at that.
Well, first of all, Steve, the sewer project and the dog park have both been on our five-year plans.
That I'm not talking about.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just letting you know that they have been on their five-year plan, okay? Actually, the dog park's been in there longer. I think back when we were on the board, we talked about what were we going to do with Bunker Park? And I think it was brought up even at that time. And we just never did anything until Elfron come through and was looking at improving their side. And they, their loans were volunteered to basically take on this project for us and do all the late work and everything else, which took a little lot of work off of our hands. But to answer some of your questions, this past year, opening week, opening weekend, the opening week alone in the campground, we brought in 87, over 87,000. That was our deposit for that first week, okay? Overall, throughout the entire season, just camping wise, we brought in over 217,000.
That's gross revenue.
Right, that's just on the camping fees. And that, overall parks, we're close to 300 with the, with the shelter rentals and pop sales, wash machine use, wood sales, we're close to 300,000.
Doesn't make sense what I'm asking, no?
I understand, it's kind of hard to pin, pin down, come up with a 10-year plan of how our revenues are going to go. Because obviously, that's going to depend upon who's camping, who's not camping, that sort of thing. I think part of the thing is that we're looking at right now is, we just came out of a, how many years? A year or two close up, everybody was closed up in their house and they wanted to get out. Camping is one of those things. I'm hoping that it's going to continue. With people investment in the new campers last summer, my son was trying to find a camper. Here locally, you could not find a used camper anywhere in town. And so, that gives me a little optimism that people are going to put in the investments, buy a camper, they're going to be using it more. And like I said, opening weekend, you know, 87,000 dollars opening weekend, that's not, nothing to sneeze about. So, I'm, I'm assuming a lot of these people, as we, most of our people that we get is opening weekend are return people from last season and seasons before. We've got people that have been down there for 15, 20 years that can come through there. And I don't see any reason why they still won't come.
Well, all I'm saying, Tom, is I'd like to see, when you're all set down, I mean, your revenue is great and you have expenses to, when we get to the end of the year, and I'll ask the mayor at the end of it, to see what reserves are left after all the operational. And then what are we going to do? Is there excess money and where are we going to put it? Are we going to allocate it for years? Like I talked to Justin once and looked at the overall city, what the city may need. So, I, I'd like to know, and you won't know that till the end of the year, so I'm not asking you to give me a loose guy thing.
If you, you know something is, and I think you understand this from being on the parks, I know for years we've always said, hey, we bring this revenue in, but it seems like when it gets budget time, we don't see the return ourselves. I understand that we've got all brand new placement on equipment in this town except for one park right now and that's the lower part of Deerwood. That's our oldest equipment in the park. Otherwise, we haven't had probably brand new equipment for 50, 60 years. We've had new equipment, but they've all been used from the parks. So, right now, all of our parks have got all brand new equipment in except for that lower portion of Deerwood. We're looking at that. But to get to your point, and I think this is something that the park board has discussed for a good many years. At the end of our season, we, we come up and we've got this figure, that's money dollars. It probably would help us a lot to know, okay, what do we have and what can we take out of that chunk of revenue and use it next year? I think that would be very helpful, especially on our five-year plans. Part of our five-year plan is replacing that playground equipment. We're looking at possibly new shelter down at Gardner, possibly new shelter at Myers. Bathrooms at Myers need to be improved and we've got only one stall each there. Gardner Park, that park could probably be used a lot more if you probably had flush toilet restroom in there. So, I mean, there's, there's things that we can do. We've just got to prioritize what we want to do and we got to know how much money we've got each year in order to do that. And it seems like every year we come up with these ideas, but we got to wait till you guys sit down with the budget to see what we've got left and what we don't have left.
Right.
But if we get the idea before that, I think that would help us a lot. Does that answer?
Yep, that's what I wanted to hear you say.
Yep.
And just to add a side note, we discussed this at the last meeting, that we figured on the 37 sites, they would bring in additional $7 per site, per day, to be the full hookup. So, it, it could equate to $47,000 a year, a season, additional revenue for the Parks Department, which, you know, in five years, you're going to have your.
Yeah, I think with the increases. With the increases that we had in the, in the camping fees this year, I really would not be surprised if we brought in close to 100,000 opening weekend. If we've got, because last year we had over 53 seasonal campers. Seasonal campers, last year they paid $1,600 for the whole season. This year, we raised it to 1750. You figure you've got 53 campers at 1750, that's 92,750 dollars.
For a year?
The scene for the very first weekend. And add in there, we, last year we had 20 monthlies that started right at opening weekend. At 315, we're going to 350 for the monthlies. That's an additional 7,000, that'll bring 99,750 opening weekend.
That's gross revenue.
That's, yes.
Not profit above and beyond what it's been in the past.
That's, right.
Okay, that's right, okay. I appreciate that, Tom.
Yeah. Hopefully, to give you a little perspective of where we're hoping that.
The park board. That'd be exciting, yeah, it'd be very exciting if that happens.
And they did have it on their agenda from last night. They are starting to work on their five-year plan right now, so. Any other questions at this time? General Government is the River Road boat access. I've been, have reached out to the engineer facilitating that project. And she informed me that there was another application that had to go to another state facility. So, it is, you know, I don't believe that that's going to be completed this fiscal year. So, it is going again forward to the next fiscal year. And I'll keep you posted as I'm updated by the, by the engineer. Public Works Central, and we, we have discussed this. And Chris has kind of reached out and got quotes. He believes it's going to be probably around 200,000. And it's going to be Central Avenue from Evans to Dodge Street, basically the bike trail. It's going to be an overlay and a curb replacement. If you have an opportunity to look at that curb, I don't know how much you could see of it right now with the stone in it, but it's pretty busted up. It's probably one of the worst curb areas we have in the city. And then loving maintenance, one of the things, Chris met, had a lot of month going out with the Army Corps of Engineers. One of the things that they need to address this next fiscal year is do gate inspections. So, they actually have to get in there and do the televising of the gates for any, and they've already seen some maintenance that they'll probably have to do. So, we did reduce that, that was something that was an option. But those are the only two major things that we see that we have to do in the public works area. Capital Projects, we're working on that rice grant for Phase Two of Eagles Landing. Speaking of Eagles Landing, Chris and his staff put up the sign today. It looks really nice. I think it, it's going to attract some attention. We'd love to hear your feedback if you get an opportunity to drive by there.
It's lighted sign or?
It's going to be lighted. The, we had purchased some lights for it that didn't work out. So, we just have to find the right application to put some lights on it. That's right there in front of.
They're just standing and hold a flashlight on.
Now you're thinking the right way.
It might be, oh, maybe we can hire someone to do that. It might be, oh, maybe we can hire someone to do that.
I think Ron volunteered.
I was just going to say, I heard volunteer.
It was just Mike. Sorry, I didn't say I was going to do it.
Not sure how that works though, what does that come up with those good ideas?
I recently received the numbers for the Eagles Landing in Phase Two. Again, we're applying for a RISE grant, and that would only, it's budgeted, but it would only be, of course, proceed if the RISE grant was received. Because we have approximately five hundred thousand dollars left in that fund for the Eagles Landing project, which would obviously go towards that. But it's going to be, you know, it's going to be about one point three million, and the RISE grant would only pay for about four hundred and fifty thousand of it. Four thirty seven, to be exact. Waste water, of course, we're working on waste water rehabilitation. Our thirty days are up on the anti-integration. I called a workbook they put together and had, had not received any comments. Collection system maintenance, which we're working on getting quotes for after we get all the things together on the quote sheet that we need. It is going to the next step. We have been in touch with Sharon at Municipal Pipe. She's helping us create a quote sheet to send out to the market. And then Michigan, Michigan Lip Station. Right now, you know, that's, they just threw a number out there. That was going to be about three hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty thousand. But of course, we're using rescue funds for that. So I don't know what questions you have, but we're here.
This is public discussion now, or?
No, it's budget workshop.
What does that mean, this, D M, for overall increase? I know not all the budget numbers are in yet, and parks were finalizing some of theirs last year.
Yeah, it was just slight, because right now, we're at six point nine four, and I think it was going to be like six point nine seven, six point nine six seven, or something like that.
What those items figure?
But, but, okay, we haven't received library's budget yet. And we haven't received all of Park's budget yet.
Okay.
I've only, I've only plugged in preliminary numbers for them. So right now, we're in the, in the surplus of about twenty four or five. So once those things get added in, and then we'll review it again to see if there's anywhere that, you know, just so you know, as I was meeting with staff and here reviewing budget, where can we cut it again? And, you know, just on the revenue side, you know, I've reached out to, say, Marlowe Schools for the SRO grant. And, you know, looking to see if we could do a two point side, you know, two point seven five increase in that contract for this coming year. And, you know, those are just things we, it takes time to get all that data back to us. But, you know, there is quite a few things. There are things that I had been talking to Counselor Siebel about was, he wanted to see that we went down to four vehicles for the police department instead of five. And that's something that we're putting into service once the new vehicle gets put back, gets put out in the street, because it's yet to be built for all the equipment they need. That will be, we'll get rid of two of the vehicles, and that will be two of the chargers. And it was interesting conversation with Chief Dean was, you know, the chargers were the big thing back in the day. And everybody was getting them. They're really great. They're great for pursuit, because they can go really fast. But he says the, the maintenance on them is just horrendous. And it's been, they've been kind of the two, chargers have been a money pit. So we're going to officially say goodbye to both of those. And we'll, we'll revisit it in a year, again, you know, after this fiscal year twenty three, and see how we came out, you know, maintenance mileage, you know, if it hasn't been beneficial for the residents in our city, so. Another thing too, is we discussed, you know, maybe utilizing part-time help and, you know, again, working to reduce the overtime. When possible, you can't have it when somebody gets sick. And with the past two years with COVID, it's been a little bit of a trial.
Why don't we switch to pickup trucks for the police department? And that way, when we swap them out every so many years, then our city gets a truck.
Chief Dean?
I think that from what other agencies have done, like the Sheriff's Office and, you know, Hudson, they, they get out in the county a little more often than we certainly do. When it comes to a turnaround, like if you want to turn around on a vehicle, a truck is about a four or five point turnaround.
Yeah.
And sometimes seconds count, you know.
Well, I know. I just know a lot of areas are going to pickups, and I just figured.
I would, I would be more supportive of the SUVs. I think the SUVs are a better suited for our, our needs, particularly in the wintertime in our location. They're, they're great for the snow and ice. And, and also with the drangles, they have the Hemi, which affords us the speed that we sometimes need, so.
Yeah. Like I said, it was just a thought, you know, that way you're recycling and getting the best out of both, you know.
I think the main thing, Mike, that I was looking at when I talked with the mayor is return on the investment when we're getting rid of stuff.
Yep.
The type of equipment we have, if we keep it newer, we may be diversified. And also, at the same time, when you, when we trade, when we swap stuff, the city could become an owner of one of the vehicle, if it was a pickup, is why I brought it up to Mayor Flaviska. That, if that happened down the road, they could easily enough take that over and, and have newer stuff, less repairs on stuff. That's what I was looking at when I brought that up to her.
Yep, and, you know, certainly, you guys are the boss. You decide what we get. I'm just throwing out my opinions as to what I think, but ultimately, we do what you want to do.
And I think if we stay, I don't know what we decide on, but we had talked about maybe a rotation sooner than what's been going on. So when we got newer vehicles and we're turning them over, they're going to have a better value than a hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars. If we do that route, then we're going to have a better way to maybe get an investment return. That's what I was also looking at.
Well, I guess when it was brought to my attention, the idea of having more, a more valuable vehicle when it came time to getting rid of them, it wasn't, part of the discussion wasn't buying new vehicles every year. I was under the impression we'd continue with the two-year plan. Because if we continue on the two-year plan, I would, I would disagree that we'd have a, a more valuable vehicle to get rid of. Because if we reduce the amount of vehicles, it doesn't change the amount of wear and tear and, I mean, these are workforces. And it, it doesn't change the amount of work that they do. It's just going to be spread out over less vehicles. So I would argue that those vehicles would probably be less in value if we stayed on the two-year plan of getting a new vehicle every two years. Now, if we want to move to a new, new vehicle every one year, then yeah, we probably would see a more valuable vehicle when we do sell it. I would agree with that.
And we have to also look at the vehicles that we have to dispose of have been the chargers. So I think that we've had a little bit of issue of releasing those from our fleet.
Well, just to be fair, the one vehicle that we couldn't give away was hit by another vehicle out of the interstate, so.
Right, that is correct.
Well, what I, ordering that brought this up, Mike, a while back, is there's been, and you know this too, there's been a tremendous amount of money spent on repairs.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, I think, I would like to see this stop. Last year stopped the bleeding. But then this year, when I talk to the mayor, what can we do to lower that down and still have good quality equipment on the road? That's why I thought, too, if we come up with this, it'd probably be a good thing for the police department and the city and the residents and the taxes and everything. So it's kind of a three-fourth fold thing in the conversation.
When the mayor and I spoke, I did, I did express that I thought it was something we could do, although I would rather we stayed with five vehicles. Because there are times where we have three officers out. There's been times where we have a vehicle that's in, be in service. So if we're down to four vehicles and we have a car in service and we have three officers working, all of our vehicles are being utilized, and if we run into a problem, we may end up being, you know, if, if one of those vehicles goes down that particular night, we got three officers and only two vehicles. So those officers can't do their job. So that, that's a possible problem we could run into if we lower our fleet to four vehicles. Now, like I said, talking with the mayor, I did say that, do I think we could, we could get by with four vehicles? Yeah, I think we could do it. I would prefer to stay with five, but I'll do whatever the will, is the, the will of the council.
Any other questions regarding the budget?
All right, now, I've got to look forward to where it's going to be saying.
Okay. I do want to point out to you too, that in employee benefits, because some of that, the employee benefits are supported by property taxes as well. I did, you know, I don't have, again, I don't have all of the numbers to plug in, but I am shown a deficit of hundred and twenty, almost one twenty one, let's just say one twenty one. And we have like almost a hundred and eighty thousand in reserves. So it was just maybe an attempt to, every, I don't know, probably every four or five years, we tend to knock that reserves down, you know, in an attempt to save the residents. So I just wanted to point that out to you as well. So there's no surprises.
Sorry, we ran a commercial.
Is this open for the public discussion at all or not?
I don't have a public discussion.
No, or is it not?
If you have a question, ask the question. Okay.
No, no, she's, we're talking, they're talking about something in the budget workshop right now.
Yeah, the budget workshop, I was wondering if there's, if we can ask questions on the budget workshop, if it's open for public discussion.
If you have a question, you can ask it.
Okay, it's several. You touched on the last one. You said the, the raises and everything. How much is health insurance paid out for the cost of health insurance over the last two years, including what's written this year?
Well, the good thing is, we had no increase last year at all.
Okay.
Zero in our health insurance. This year, they're looking at a seven percent increase, and that's, that's an estimate. Because, you know, the numbers won't be in, you know, our policy, our renewal doesn't come in until July. So the numbers, we won't have, know the numbers until the second quarter. So we don't know for sure, but that's what they're anticipating. But there's been times in the past that we've had a twenty eight percent increase
Right.
in health insurance. We have switched to an HMO policy for most city workers, and that is saving the city substantially. Also, the city buys down the deductible. So it also leverages our health insurance to be less as well, because the insurance carrier's not taking on all the responsibility or the risk. So we have continuously worked in areas to reduce our health insurance coverage for the city.
What, what, what is the cost for a family policy per employee?
Just right off the top of my head, I think the cost for a family policy is nineteen thousand annually.
It's a big benefit. Okay. The other question I, I had, it basically goes back to the parks. They keep mentioning increasing things in Gardner Park and Angels Park and Deerwood Park. And if you look, all them parks, they're near within three blocks of each other. Sure, they come up and put some camp, some new park equipment in the Fourth Ward in Triangle Park up there, but.
Kesspear Park, Mark? Kesspear Park.
Is that the name?
Kesspear Park.
I was going to say Triangle.
Triangle Park.
Triangle Park is a park.
Oh, by Jones.
Oh, by Jones. I call it Triangle because it, the way the roads, it sets like a triangle. But there could be a lot more done in that park. There could be a soccer, if it's big enough to put a soccer field into, soccer nets for kids, something to do, you know. You've got volleyball down the other, down at Gardner, and they're all stretched out. But as far as up there, there's a lot of kid, they don't realize how many kids actually use our park.
We have, over the years, put brand new basketball nets and basketball backboards up there. And every year, no sooner do we put them up, they're bent.
Because they weren't put up as a commercial.
They were commercial.
Well, I've seen it. The, the back, if you would have took the ones you threw away out of Bunker Park, the double pole basketball unit that was there, and put it up there, it'd last.
I think that basketball, isn't that?
It's a single unit.
Down in Bunker? Yeah.
Huh?
That basketball moved down in Bunker still.
But it's going to go, but it, it.
We have no, we haven't said anything about pulling it out yet.
There's a lot of things, I mean, we could work with the schools, get, there's units setting that haven't been used that are blocked off up in, off Logan Avenue where a school used to be. You look out in the field, there, there's like six brand new basketball backboards there that are sitting there. It's fenced off, kids can't even use them. And if the schools ain't going to use them.
Where's, where's this?
It's where Logan, it's where Logan Avenue used to be, behind it, but they do get used. I think that the schools can't sell it to anyone else.
Well, it's kind of like our.
They can give them away, same way they give the children away.
We couldn't even give away the playground equipment that we tore out for live.
Yeah.
I'd agree with you, Mark. I mean, I, I think it's kind of silly too, that, especially those slides and stuff like that, they were, nothing wrong with those metal slides, but yet.
I know our insurance carrier said that, but you bring a different, I mean, how many times have I seen it changed from pea gravel back to?
Mulch.
Mulch, back to pea gravel, and you go to all these other towns. You go down south, down Brooklyn, Iowa, and all over, they got all the old equipment that we got, that we had. And kids are using it everywhere, and it's insurance carrier. What, you know, you walk in and say, what needs to be replaced? Yeah, the insurance carrier's going to say, brand new. But right across our boundary outrun, they still got teeter totters.
The horses on the spring.
Horses on the spring, all that. Merry-go-rounds.
We got merry-go-round.
Right across the creek.
We got merry-go-round.
Yeah, newer one, but the old, I mean.
Yeah, the Deerwood, yeah, we got actually good tool.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, we had one up Kesspear.
Still have that gate.
Kesspear Park.
Gate, I think we tore the gate out, because I think the gate was broke.
But I'm saying, it's things like that.
Yeah.
Our insurance carrier, well, maybe we need to shop for a new, to get insurance carrier instead of spending five hundred thousand dollars on playground equipment.
We had a, we had a federal inspector come in, was it two years ago? He dinged a hell out of us, even on the new equipment down at Deerwood. He dinged us on that even.
But did we ask him to come in or what?
Yes, yes.
We, we hired him. I mean, we didn't just listen to our insurance company, because the insurance company made all these recommendations. So the Park Department went out and hired a professional inspector.
And that, that inspector could walk in here, ding, ding you on brand new equipment you purchased last year.
He basically did, he basically did, and I called him on it, and I asked him, I said, do you work for the insurance companies? Because he dinged us on that new equipment that we had down at Deerwood. So it's kind of, it's kind of, especially with ICAP, with, with the city's insurance, is we're kind of, we're damned if we do, we damned if we don't. And if someone gets hurt down there or something for, for any reason, and we don't follow the insurance companies, I mean, that's what we're looking at.
Why, I understand what you're looking at and all that, I'm just saying.
In Kesspear.
Kesspear Park is so far away from all the rest, do more than the Fourth Ward. I mean, you tore out Bunker Park, basically, the term of the dog, which could have been put off into Deerwood in behind the sewer plant, you know, a dog ear, and kept, that's probably one of the best picky parks, everybody said, over all these years that we had. Even though it had a crap shelter and hardly a picnic. I mean, it had big trees, shade trees, all the rest of our parks don't, that have, if that's you down Deerwood, there ain't nothing for big trees in them, no, no shade, you know? Let's do more, let's do more in the Fourth Ward for a change.
I'm going to agree with you on the whole Fourth Ward thing. I don't, I, I'm.
I don't, I, I'm not educated on all of the other nuances you have, so I, I don't have any comment on that. But I, I will say that it's been a frustration of mine as a mother of six, that I have to expect my kids or walk with my kids all the way into Elfron to get to the nearest park. It would be great if we could have another park over in the Lilydale area. Just, and, and next time a city lot comes available or something, maybe get a smaller playground going over there. That would be nice. I, I, I know that it probably isn't in the budget, or maybe it isn't in the timeframe of the budget. But it's something that we should look into. It, it's quite a walk for the kids to get to a park from my neighborhood.
Because all the other group, I'm telling you about them other ones, you got Gardner Park, and Mary's Lake and all that.
They are, they are on the other side of town.
All within three blocks of each other.
Yeah. And we got nothing. They, they, in K-Sphere, they got stuff, but we got nothing over by us unless we go across McCoy. And who wants to send your eight-to-ten-year-old off on a skateboard to cross McCoy? Kind of a sketchy, sketchy John.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Part, just part of the budget in the parks. And then as far as Deerwood, the expansion thing, the sewer thing and all that. Myself, I think they oughta be paying, I mean, if you own a property, everybody's paying property tax in Evansdale for your property. For the people that go down there and live year-round, they pay no property tax, any support. They're paying into this fee, but then again, on the sewer side of it, everybody in town that owns a house is play, is paying for the retrofit of the sewer plant, the new. They're putting what, almost twenty dollars out, you know, a quarter for, for that right now. And I don't know when that's set to go up again, but they're not paying anything down there for that stuff.
Did I hear anything on the budget for wife, or for technology? Did you have anything? I, I didn't hear you say anything about technology.
For?
Um, just in general, you're talking about how the water company or the water commission needs more people to fill out applications.
We don't do want to work's budget, honey.
Well, no, I understand that, but if we had more technology as a community to get this information out there, we wouldn't so much need the Evansdale News and things of that. I mean, that's gonna hit us kinda hard. So if we could get some technology going, where maybe we have a text list that people could subscribe to, to get, you know, notifications on, hey, your garbage is gonna be late because it's windy, or it's a holiday, or, you know, there's, there's things going on where you need to apply if you wanna be a member.
It'd be like, like the school district has it, they call it the connected. So I don't know how expensive anything is, because it's tied in to phone numbers.
There's something we'll consider, but I don't think it's gonna be in this budget, honey.
Right, but it's, it's something that we should be doing.
I have a question for that latest target. I, I think we're gonna implement it again, and I think Troy did a great job of it. We kinda got off track, but I'm hoping that in the end, we'll get us back in that transparency on Facebook and everything, putting everything out there. I found that to be a very encouraging thing last year when we were on it regularly. Whether it was good, bad, or indifferent, it was going out on the page, what was going on, what didn't go on, what, what's happening. And a lot of people gave me positive feedback on that, that they liked that, so I'm hoping that we will do that again. Because I think that's a big way to get, not everybody has Facebook, I understand, I'm kind of a little phobic, but I can still get on it.
I don't like Facebook.
But it's a way that we found out that it gets out to a lot of people, and the word gets out. And that's a good tool, and it doesn't really cost a thing, I can do that. And I, I think we're gonna start rolling with that.
I, I don't know what, what a text list would take to do. I, I don't have any education in technology at all. But I know that I'm gonna respond to a text on my phone a lot more quicker than I am going to have something run through my social media feed. Because A, I don't get on there that often, and B, a lot of times, I don't necessarily wanna connect with certain people, so I just don't, I'm not active, and if you're not active, you're not in the algorithms, and then it just doesn't show up on your news feed.
Yeah, that's something that we can look into. I can even reach out to Blackhawk County Emergency Management, because they talked about with this new software that they're using, there was possibly more things that we could do with that as a city. And I'll reach out to them, so they can ask them about that.
You know, just as, as community announcements in general, if it comes through on everybody's phone as a text, and they have the option to unsubscribe, it's not gonna be invasive, because you're hitting the target audience that you need to be hitting.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, and one last, on, on her point, I don't know if you watch Waterloo Council meetings, I don't know if you're working, if we should be working with Waterloo on this. But I've been watching them lately, and they've been doing, they've already paid for engineer's study. Now they're actually doing the actual locate things for the new whatever five that's going out, or something. But Waterloo's already paid for the whole town for engineering thing on this deal, and they're out actually marketing every house for locates for this new system, and the city of Waterloo's putting the bill on somehow. And I, I watched them meetings, and they talked about it quite a bit, and if they're doing it, we're basically a sister city somehow. It's the new, it's gonna be the new, that they put these antennas on, all the poles.
It has to do with the cellular, a lot of it's put on hold because it's.
Yeah, and we, I got an email for one of those, it's the five G, but.
It's being put on hold because of the airplane traffic. It's interfering with.
But they're hooking, they're doing the whole, they're, they're, they spent a lot of money on.
Waterloo's that's running the money. It's, it's Verizon.
They're running it.
T-Mobile, US Air, those AT&T.
Okay.
They're the ones, and I, they have reached out to me, but I've responded back, and I haven't heard. But we will be in contact with them.
I don't wonder if we're working on that.
Yeah, we'll be in contact with them. Let's move on. Counsel, Senator Eagles Landing Deed of Dedication. I talked with a couple of you council members. This is a very important piece. This is gonna be kind of like a final piece when we do our final plat, that we have to register with the county. I also set out in front of you tonight, an example, I had reached out to our realtor and asked for, you know, a couple examples of a couple different cities that they had worked with. The one she sent me over was the city of Cedar Falls and. I would hope that we would never do anything so elaborate. It depends, you know, you get points for what size of tree you put in, so. I don't really think that that's what we were looking for. I think we're more looking to limit getting maybe a metal building in. Getting a, a warehouse in there, that they're just putting the warehouse in there, and they're gonna lease out the, the spaces. And those are some of the things that have been brought to us. And so we have to look at subletting, you know, that needs to be a portion of that deed of dedication. You know, and the simple things that you don't think are that important, because our code requires it, you know, paving the parking lot. Is, you know, and those are things that we really need to review. And, you know, we're gonna have a site review committee too, when we get offers for the Eagles Landing development. That we, as a council, really need to, you know, update the permitted uses. You know, what is our vision? And are we just saying our vision for all the properties, all the six lots that are facing the interstate, that, you know, we wanna have upscale hotels, retail, restaurants, even a business type, professional business building? Then are we gonna, you know, allow for, you know, warehouses and manufacturing on the rest of the lots? So those are all things that we really need to take into consideration when we're putting this deed of dedication together. So I'm, you know, welcome any ideas, welcome any comments. I, if, I'm hoping to get more examples. I'll reach out to people myself if I need to. So we can put something together, you know, it's something that we probably need to put together, probably, you know, somewhere around the six-week range. So we can get the plat. And there, there's no timeline definition on that, that we wanna be able to get the final plat recorded. And we'll be, Josh is here tonight with the Dutton Law Firm, and, you know, please speak to him after the meeting, because we would like to make that appointment next, at the next meeting.
Is it being marketed currently?
What's that?
Is it being marketed?
It is. Well, supposedly by Chris officials, but we're, Charles had reached out to some people that build, basically, the state of Iowa. Are you still there, Charles?
Maybe the awful quiet. Yeah, I'm here.
Just wanted to make sure you didn't fall asleep there.
But, no, I reached out to Timpus, Timpus Pop Hospitality, who does many of the hotels in Iowa. They've got some in the view, some amazing city. Used to have some in Waterloo, but they sold between the Waterloo about fifteen years ago. And they're looking to go back into this, into this market. Seems very, very interesting. I did reach out to him last week, and he said it's all in best, and he planned his major project. And will let us know when that trip will be. You know, it's more of a, more of an upscale-type hotel situation. They're very excited about the, the visitor park going in, and what we've got going on with our chance around, and how, how we're growing. Very, it seems, it seems we really, really appreciate that. So I'll tell you that, you know, along with, you know, covenants and, and all that good stuff, we need to also reach out as a council, maybe put together a council packing, and do some mailings to some of these other hospitality industries. There's some that handle, you know, just rest spots and things of that sort. And at least get the word out that, that we're welcoming, welcoming to meet, and that we do want their business.
Yeah, and I had actually, just a side note on that, I've reached out to Rose with Bolton and Meek, if she would help us put, you know, just a small marketing piece together. She has experiences with that, and maybe some keywords or what have you, that we could do some online marketing as well. But I have reached out, hadn't heard back from her yet, and thank you, Charles.
You know, instead of turning down all the places that you don't want out there, like industrial?
Yeah.
We got out here that started to grow and then stopped, and then you got over by Flying J that started out residential and turned into industrial. So if people wanna build industrial or warehouses, why not just put them over here? Still in town, we still get the tax revenue.
I don't, we don't have any land left over there, nor indoors drive.
There's nothing left over here?
Nope.
Oh, the road goes. I just figured it was waiting for future expansion. Foss used to talk about developing that cornfield.
No, we did. We talked about that, but that swamp land, and we.
Oh.
Chris actually did some research into that.
Say, it never came back to what the engineers said about natural or the way the sewage was running. I was gonna say, I mean, why turn them away when we got?
No, indoors drive is full as well. We, we had our last person in there a couple, three years ago.
Oh, I just figured, you know, it started out residential over there, and then it turned truck washing again to stop the residential drill.
Yeah.
And I didn't know we'd done over there, I thought that was still an option.
Okay, public discussion non-agenda items, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Polly Parker, Marion Avenue. I wanted to thank council, the council for making sure the city doesn't have a loss on 111 Bright Street. Really appreciate that. Also, I wanted to check on Resolution sixty-five seventy-one. Did you want the bid letting to happen on Wednesday, February second, or Thursday, February third? It's, it was one of those cases where Harry went really fast, and like, the number doesn't match the date.
On what the engineer put, or what we put on there?
The, this was on the document you put on the agenda, of setting the date for the public hearing and bid letting. If we wanna come to that, is that gonna be on Wednesday, February second, or Thursday, February third?
I believe it's February third, but I'd be happy to look at it for you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
They've got the public hearing for January eighteenth.
That's the public hearing, she's talking the bid letting.
Okay.
She wanted to be here for the bid letting.
The open biz, February third.
Yeah, February third.
It says Wednesday, February third, so.
It doesn't say Wednesday, it just says February third.
On, we're looking at different documents.
Yep, I have mine, our council packet says Wednesday, February third specifically.
So it's, you think it's Thursday, the third?
Yes, possibly, yes. I don't have a copy of it in front of me, Polly.
I'm sorry. And then also, on Resolution sixty-five seventy-two, you said the rice grant is going to cover four thousand three hundred seventy thousand dollars potentially. So that means, I just wanna check, the city of Evansdale is gonna pay eight thousand sixty-three thousand dollars to develop for Atlanta Street.
We don't have the totals on those yet. We're in the process of putting those documents together for the rice grant.
Okay. And then one more question. I read through the Eagles Landing Deed of Dedication document, and I just wanted to make sure I understood it right. That is not going to be for residential building, only business. Is that correct?
This is just for Eagles Landing, Eagles Landing only.
Not residential at all there?
It is not.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor and council reports, the only thing I have for you tonight is when you would like your next budget workshop. I was thinking for, if you wanna do it on next Tuesday and off night, we could do it at the same time, and it would just be on the budget. Or we could do it at five o'clock on the eighteenth at our next council meeting, an hour before the regular meeting.
I'd prefer a regular night, because I can't be here in council that second. Where would you sit at five o'clock? I can't be.
On the eighteenth, the normal health night, you could not be here at five?
Right.
Okay.
So you want separate workshop?
I, I, I'd like to just go along with next Tuesday night, six o'clock or five oh five or.
Oh, January eleventh?
Yeah, next Tuesday.
Okay.
Or just places that we'll talk about, if there's any other agenda.
I will be out of town, but I'm happy to run to your phone.
Okay.
Okay, well, you don't have to, I mean, we got change.
I'll be sitting in a hotel room, so, yeah, I'm fine dialing in, that works better for everybody.
Charles, are you okay with that as well, January eleventh? At six?
Uh, probably being key into the salt January audit, but I would like to join in if I could just do this room or set up a notebook. Talking to us room.
Okay, sounds good. Counsel?
Oh, I, I had a question on the Eagles Landing, I'm a little confused. I thought that was set up in the beginning where the council will make all the decisions of what goes in out there at Eagles Landing and not a committee. I talked to Troy, good, bad, whatever.
Oh, no, you will make the decision. The decision is the council's.
But I mean, if they bring something forward, I mean, I don't wanna waste their time bringing stuff forward, and then the council don't go along with what they think.
Well, the, you know, are you talking about the site review plan?
Right.
Okay. The site review would just, ultimately, it'd always go before council. But they could have some things that they would suggest maybe to council, and those are, these are gonna be people that, you know, the building inspector, Scott Strader, who is an inspector for the city of Waterloo, Chris Scherz, who would review the sewer and water with, with the rest of the public staff. And just make recommendations to council.
Shouldn't we have Evansdale residents or council on that review committee as well, sitting at the table when the council decide?
And that's what I said as well, you know, one or two council members on that committee. Besides Chris and Brian, everybody is an Evansdale resident.
Brian's not Evansdale resident.
Except besides Chris and Brian, everybody on that site review committee is an Evansdale resident. And if you have any suggestions, I think that's what I ask. Do you have any suggestions on who would be like to be on that committee?
Oh, if it doesn't interfere with what I work, I wouldn't mind being on it, but it's gonna depend on what. Well, if it doesn't interfere with what I work, I wouldn't mind being on it, but it's gonna depend on what comes up and what goes on in the days and stuff, so I'm glad I would like to be involved, but it doesn't work out, it don't work out.
Well, and then you can look at it this way too. Instead of maybe a site review committee, if you don't, if you're opposed to that, I'm just throwing this out there. You're just, we're just gonna have to put enough in that deed of dedication, so we don't get something that, you know, ultimately, council's gonna make the decision on, you know, an offer that is made to the city. But it's just.
I have a question, what would planning and zoning be doing there?
Yeah. Well, planning and zoning, they're, I mean.
Because isn't that what they do?
That, what that's for?
Isn't Scott Strater on the painting?
Not technically, no. If you read our code, that is not their sole responsibility, so.
I, I didn't say sole, but.
It doesn't mean that they're, it doesn't mean that people of the planning and zoning committee would not be available to be on that committee if we do a site review committee.
So what does planning and zoning do then?
Well, planning and zoning is mo- mostly for our zoning ordinance. That's their sole, um, position for the city, is the review and the enhancement of our zoning ordinance.
Okay, so wouldn't that property be zoned for certain, maybe assumptions?
It's obviously zoned for commercial, so no, that doesn't apply.
Oh, just wide open commercial?
Yep.
I'm just thinking myself, like, if you have a nice hotel there, and then you end up with some manufacturing company, building right next door.
Next door.
Well, that's what, that's what we're trying to avoid.
Amazing. Right.
And ultimately, it's the council's decision on what's gonna be placed there. But we can limit, you know, especially on those first six slots that are on the interstate, we can limit the warehousing and the manufacturing, but it doesn't mean that we don't wanna have them on the back side. You know, in, in the lots that are further towards the back of that, that division. So.
I just know myself when I travel, I like, I'm staying in a hotel air, I like to be in a hotel area, I don't want to feel like I'm in the middle of an industrial park in my hotel.
Right.
You know?
I am in.
And we reached out, Chris officials, about any dialogue we've asked in the past as far as working together, what our thoughts are to him and him to us, and I see he's sold a lot of property in Waterloo in the last thirty days. Ain't that amazing? Have we, have you reached out? I mean, I thought we were gonna.
I've, almost every day. I've emailed them three times just today.
And do you not get a response?
Um, I did, yeah, I did, and that was this other piece that I was just talking about to council. But, um, I don't know, I'm open for discussion. If, if you guys wanted to discuss that right now, on what you want to go in lots one through six, and if you want the rest of the area to be our vision, initial vision of retail, restaurants?
I think we need to take some time to think about it, because it's an important piece, so we need to make sure that we make these appropriate guidelines.
Right.
You know, make the appropriate guidelines, because like, you said, we don't want, you know, manufacturers in with the hotels, I mean, if they're in the back, you know, and they give money to Evansdale and they're, you know, they look okay, it might be different, but.
Right.
And I don't want somebody posting a bunch of billboards all over to attract people from the interstate, you know, like, just, you know, making it look not attractive.
Yep. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Man?
Yeah?
I had my hand up under, sorry, I can't walk, I would probably fall on my feet.
I'm sorry, I wasn't even.
Under public, public discussion, I had a couple. Uh, last council meeting, I, I watched the thing on TV, and you bought a steel building, and I looked.
You watched it on TV?
Huh?
I picked it up.
Or I wa, you could listen to it, the thing.
Your counseling.
Your council meeting was listened to.
Really?
Yeah.
You did it, you recorded it.
Huh?
Your chat, anyway, go on.
Okay, but the, the bids on the steel building, I looked at stills. I've been looking at steel buildings for years. This time of year, everybody discounts on forty, fifty percent. That steel building runs, I had three different bidders that I talked to.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Does it matter at this point?
Yes, it does, because.
It's already been purchased.
It ain't up yet. The other thing I, I was gonna bring up is I noticed, I, the whole thing, even on, in your, uh, that you okayed the last meeting, is the council boundaries, and you stated right in there that it would be on the final plat or layout or whatever, that you'd be able to see where the line's read. Go back and look at what it read in the minutes of the meeting.
Mark, we're, we're working on that, to get clarification on that mapping?
What is the map, what are the boundaries? I mean, I've never seen any.
I've reached out to the state of Iowa today, I've reached out to the county elections manager, and I've not received a response, because I have some questions as well.
Shouldn't the questions, all I got, the, the main point of it is, is I've brought the council many, many times, never pass anything on the first reading, and waive the rules of the second, third. Because almost anybody that sees, that watches the meeting, or reads, reads it in the paper or any else, that's the first time you're gonna find out about it, is when you pass it the first time. And they have a right to at least come and voice their opinion the second or third before you pass it. When you waive the rules and just run something through, an ordinance is a law. And that, that sets a law for the whole town. And when you just waive it through, and now you're, now you're talking about, you're talking to the state and everybody else, well, I don't know, you already waived the rules, passed it, has it been published?
It has been published.
See, so that makes it.
Then it was a question, it's, the boundaries have been set. They've been set, and they've been approved.
By who? And then again, that, somebody would know that's coming, because the boundaries used to, years ago, once you're planning and zoning. Planning and zoning hardly ever has a meeting, they don't talk about it anymore.
The boundaries are actually set by council, and they have a.
But they, the, the planning and zoning is a recommendation board, they don't pass and make the law. They are a recommendation board, the planning and zoning is, is a, is a tool of the council to find out what's going on, what the public, you got, you got a big group of what, eleven on there or something? That is from all wards, that recommends to the city council of what to do. And they're, they're not being utilized, I feel, over the last five years or six years of making recommendations of buildings going into town, of turning commercial buildings into rental properties, housing rental properties, and this whole. That's what the planning and zoning is for, use them, council should use them and take their recommendations.
Mark, one thing I'll say on that, when Lorraine was alive, and I talked to John Pebble, I told him, not tell him, I asked him, in your winter months, to get together to review the ordinances and, and everything that's set up, because I know there's some issues there, I understand that, but the council cannot make those kind of changes. And Mr. Pebble may speak to that.
Yeah, I've been told by the past administration, they enforce our ordinances to their discretion. By that one. By that one.
But I just, I just wanted, that's one point that I really wanted to bring out on this discussion point. You, you, use the boards and stuff you have, you know? Sure, you brought the water board, adding more people to it, do it, you know? This, if it, if it's good, you all feel it's a good idea, do it. But use, use the people you have in town, other than a select few that have already been here, that have been on the council, and you bounce them to a board and all this. Get, get general people in the public that have an opinion of what's going on.
Thank you, Mark. I entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
No move.